All right, let me do this again. So, welcome to the special meeting of the City Council of Temecula, May 12th, 2020. So now I will lead us in a flag salute. Would you please stand?
Ready, begin.
A diligence to the flag. Of America and to the republic for which it stands. Nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice brought.
All right, thank you. Madam City Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Edwards.
Morning.
Councilmember Niggar. Councilmember Niggar, you are here. You are just on mute.
Good morning.
Councilmember Ron.
Here.
Councilmember Swank.
I'm here.
And Mayor Stewart, I see that you are here.
Yeah. All right, so now I'm going to turn it over to Greg and Matt for a fire announcement. Take it away.
All right, yeah, just real quick, I wanted to make a quick plug for our first responders here, of course. But also, wanted to mention something related to not just fire, but public safety in general in our hospital. We had, should have mentioned this last week, but I'm mentioning it now. Darlene Wenton, our CEO for the hospital, had sent off an email to myself and Aaron talking about COVID-19 and residents taking social isolation to a bit of an extreme. And her concern is that they've experienced at the hospital a significant decline in patients presenting to the hospital with two of the most serious illnesses, which are stroke and heart attack. Those individuals that are coming to the ER have often waited for several days while suffering at home with symptoms of heart disease. This can delay, can have a significant impact on their morbidity and mortality. The hospital has done a really fantastic job in our community with the management of the COVID-19. This is an unintended consequence that's going to have serious implications to the overall health of residents. And she would appreciate when she reached out our assistance in helping to message that the hospital is very safe, has capacity, and those that are experiencing medical emergencies should seek immediate medical assistance by calling 911. And that said, you know, our first responders and Cal Fire, in particular, are often the ones that show up first. And so, we had asked them to sort of present on some of what they're doing to keep themselves safe and keep the community safe as well. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Chief Crater.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mayor, Council, City Manager, and staff. I got a PowerPoint presentation for you to go over. If you could put the PowerPoint up.
Can everyone see the PowerPoint?
Yep. All right, next slide, please. All right, so some of the actions we're taking, I'll just give you an overview of what we're doing. We're minimizing our exposure risk. We're triaging our 911 calls in the command center. We got a few video slides that you will see how we go through that procedure and the questions that we ask specifically to the patient. So we know when to alert our crews and engine crews as they're responding that these patients are exhibiting signs that might be COVID-related. Personal protective equipment, everybody in every station has enough PPE to sustain and utilize. And all of our stations and equipment are being sanitized daily and after every call. Next slide, please. So with that being said, some of the things that we've done to minimize our exposure and risk is restricting access to our facilities, which includes Paris, our headquarters, our ECC, our training facilities, our fire stations, and fire marshal offices as well. We've postponed and canceled many of our public events. We are still reaching out on social media to the public to give them information on COVID-19, where they can go for that information on the Riverside County Fire website. There's a lot of platforms as far as Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram that our PIO is working on and updating daily, sometimes hourly. Even though we postponed or canceled events, we're still getting out in the community, doing birthday drive-bys, doing virtual happy birthdays to our residents. And with that being said, graduations as well, I see that coming up. So, we are still out there as a fire department, we're still in the public. We're following our standards and engaging in every way that we can to make sure that the citizens know we're still there for them, not only just to run 911 calls, but also in a supporting manner. Utilizing social media has been huge for us, and it's been working very well. Next slide, please. Screening for infectious disease through our ECC and 911 triage, we'll go to a video for that. Like I said, we notify firefighters prior to arrival to the scene. We've ran over 20,000 calls since this began. We started at the end of February, early March, putting our algorithm in place, which basically is when we get on scene, the first thing we try to do is have whoever's having the medical issue or psychiatric emergency meet us at the front door out of the home. That cannot be done. Our firefighters will don their safety gear, which is the N95 mask, gown, gloves, and enter the residence. We send one person in, the other two or three members stay outside unless they're needed inside, and that patient is safely removed. Exter the home to where we could treat them and provide ALS. ALS is never delayed, the paramedic is first to the door, he assesses the scene and see what is needed for that patient. Next, please, is a video for our
Chief, Cal Fire and Riverside County Fire Department. Fire and law enforcement dispatchers are Riverside County's first first responders.
Fire Department, what's the address of the emergency?
Riverside County Fire dispatchers are highly trained and certified to process every 911 call to ensure the safety of the patient and responding firefighters and paramedics. This includes triaging infectious disease symptoms.
And has he been in contact with a person who has traveled from a known infected area?
It is important for you to answer every question during this process so that the dispatcher can work through the emergency medical dispatching protocol. And equally important, suffer first responders where the appropriate personal protective equipment when they arrive. While the dispatcher is providing pre-arrival instruction to the callers, firefighters have already received the call and are responding.
No matter when, no matter where, no matter what time, we are Riverside County's first responders.
Okay, that kind of gives you an idea of what our response looks like, and this is basically sorry about that. What we put out to the public as far as what we look like when we show up on scene to a call. We wear the gloves, goggles, N95 mask to all calls, regardless if they're medical or not. It could be a public service, it could be somebody's smoke detector going off when we're making contact with the public. This is, we're going to be wearing the necessary gear. The gowns won't be worn on all calls, those are basically for if we have any kind of body fluids that could come in contact with us. And mainly, that is for full arrest.
When responding to emergency calls during this COVID-19 pandemic, here's the safety gear that we wear and why. No matter the type of emergency medical call, first responders will be wearing extra safety equipment prior to evaluating and treating patients. What does that look like? Here, I'll show you. An N95 face mask, which protects us from breathing in harmful or contagious germs. A pair of goggles, which protects our eyes. We always wear gloves to protect our hands. And in certain cases, we may wear a protective gown over our uniform. When we arrive, if possible, have the patient meet us outside to maintain social distancing, which helps us minimize exposure for everyone. We've taken these extra steps to ensure our safety and the safety of our community.
So with that, also protecting ourselves at the fire station, we disinfect all our equipment after every incident. We do a daily deep cleaning, that sometime is done twice a day, at night and in the morning, and during shift change. We have hand washing stations in the bays prior to entering the station. We've also went as far as deconning our work boots and slipping on another pair of shoes before we enter the station to reduce any kind of contamination in that atmosphere. Step-in boot, disinfected containers, it'll be a bleach solution or a disinfectant solution where we could step in that. Even prior to getting into our piece of equipment. To go to a call, the boots are clean, they're disinfected, and they're ready to go before we have to enter somebody's home or nursing facility, or anything in that matter.
Hello, my name is Brian White, and I'm a Battalion Chief for Cal Fire and Riverside County Fire Department for the city of Palm Desert. We want to ensure to the public that during these unprecedented times, that you can count on us. All of our apparatus are covered, and our fire stations are fully operational. We have, however, restricted access to the public, and that's to ensure the safety of our first responders. When you see us, we will now be wearing N95 masks, and depending on the type of call, we may be wearing a gown and additional protection. When our firefighters return from a call, one of the first steps they take is to decontaminate their equipment. Once the equipment has been decontaminated, firefighters will then begin the process of decontaminating themselves. They first start with washing their hands in accordance with CDC guidelines for a minimum of 20 seconds. Behind me, you can see some hand washing stations that were provided by Buritex Environmental. The next step is moving into the fire station. Before entering, they dip their boots into a disinfecting solution. Please know that the Cal Fire Riverside County Fire Department is committed to ensuring the public safety and our firefighters' safety.
Okay, with that being said, we, as an apartment, Riverside County, have had some scares in cases that we thought might be COVID, but turned out not to be. Currently, we have nobody in quarantine and zero confirmed cases in our staff for COVID-19. As far as April, the Temecula Fire Department has run 580 calls, planned reviews 176, construction inspections 84, and annual inspection 742, and that concludes my report.
Excellent report, thank you very much, Chief. Okay, so we only have one item on our agenda today, but before we do that, I just want to make a statement to kind of set the tone for the meeting and the discussion later. So, as many of you know, that I am a local businessman. When the COVID-19 hit our area and the state, I, like many other businesses in the state, closed our doors to prevent unnecessary sickness and death. We were told to shelter in place for up to six weeks, and I, like other businesses, were willing to do that to save lives. The whole idea behind the shutdown was to prevent the hospitals from being overrun with patients so quality care could be given to each and every one that got this virus and to slow the spread of the virus. So here's where the disconnect started for me personally. When we were told to close our businesses, most of our businesses that had probably less than 10 people in them at any given time, yet Walmart, Lowe's, Home Depot, Target, and many large retailers were still able to operate. Now, how is that allowing businesses that attract hundreds of people into stores at any given time is safer than a small business with a very controlled environment? I watched people walking around Walmart and other big retail stores, picking up items multiple times and putting them back. And we all know, the physical touch is the primary way to get the virus. But all of that's irrelevant because the virus didn't take over our city or state as once predicted. And yet, we're still being told it's going to hit us in a possible second wave. It seems like the modeling that they've been using is a New York City model of high-density cities, not based on a suburban area like Temecula. There is not one small business in this town that wouldn't do anything or everything to prevent an unnecessary sickness or death. I've been accused of profit over people, and that is not what this is all about. This is about people over people. When the death rate of this virus is so small, and the destruction to millions of people who spent their entire lives building businesses, it just makes no sense to me personally. But I do recognize, however, there are people out there who feel differently, and that's okay. We can have a respectful debate and agree to disagree. Now, as mayor, I've come to understand that the power that we have on the city council, and me as mayor, is almost non-existent. We don't have the ability to open our city until the county or the state allows us to. And if we allow a subculture of reopening before it's allowed, we could lose tens of millions of dollars of incredibly crucial disaster relief funds that go to support our public safety, police and fire. Police and fire costs continue even though our economy was decimated. And businesses who opened prematurely could lose their state licenses, and I don't want to see that happen to anybody. So, what's our meeting about today? It's about our community recovery, recovery based on economics and on health. We want to show the county and the state that we are ready to open our community in a responsible way that balances the needs for people to be healthy and safe with the needs of earning a living and paying our bills. We know the county is working on this also, and we want to be a good partner and help the county in their efforts and show the state and the county of Riverside that we could be open sooner rather than later. I'm interested, I'm not interested in Monday morning quarterbacking or political hype. I just want us to focus on getting our community back on its feet. And this morning, the plan that we're going to be looking at advocates these efforts. So let's treat each other with respect, and let's get started. So Madam City Clerk, can I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for those comments to set the stage for this particular item, our community recovery and reopening plan. Jonathan, can we please go ahead and put up the slides? Okay. Next slide, please. So as we get started today, we wanted to take a minute to really look back at how we found ourselves here. And it was interesting in preparing this particular slide, you don't really know how quickly things have happened until you see in 20 days the action that was taken globally. So in December 2019, the novel coronavirus COVID-19, as we now know it, was first identified. Since then, declarations of emergency and response to COVID-19 were declared globally. On March 4th, the governor for the state of California declared an emergency. On March 8th, the Riverside County Public Health Officer declared an emergency. On March 10th, the Riverside County Board of Supervisors ratified the March 8th decision. On March 11th, the World Health Organization declared COVID-19 to be a pandemic. On March 13th, the President of the United States declared an emergency under the Stafford Act. On March 17th, the City Manager of the City of Temecula declared a local emergency. And on March 24th, the City Council of the City of Temecula went ahead and ratified that particular declaration and declared the local emergency. From March 4th to March 24th, you can see in a 20-day period, a lot happened. Next slide, please. Also in that timeframe, there were a ton of orders that came out, whether they were through the county of Riverside or they were through the state of California, a lot of action took place in response to COVID-19. We wanted to take a minute to actually just state which orders are in place right now as we stand this morning. And that is one order through the county of Riverside dated May 9th, 2020, through the county public health officer. And one order from the state of California, March 19th, 2020, through the state public health officer and state public health department director. These are the two most relevant orders to our discussion today. Next slide, please. On May 9th, the county orders specifically, as you know, the Board of Supervisors rescinded all public health orders, except this one still remains in place. And it basically states that all K-12 public, private, and charter schools in the county of Riverside are closed from March 16th, 2020, through June 19th, 2020, until further notice. There is no other county, Riverside County, order in place at this time. Next slide, please. Now, the state order that is most relevant to our discussion today is actually the stay-at-home order. And that stay-at-home order states that all individuals must stay home except, one, when getting necessities such as food, prescriptions, and healthcare. And two, as needed to maintain the operations in the 16 critical sectors. And those sectors are defined by the federal government. The order also states that when leaving home to do, for one of these two reasons, social distancing must be practiced. Next slide, please. What is not in those orders, orders do not include any mandates for PPEs. PPEs include the facial coverings, gloves, any other personal protective equipment. And the orders do not include an end date for the stay-at-home provision. So that's really important because there is no specified date right now in the state order for reopening. Next slide, please. However, despite there not being a date for reopening, reopening conversations are happening at all levels, at the federal level, at the state level, at the county level, and now at the city level as well. Next slide, please. So, the federal level reopening conversation started first. And it's important to note that all of these guidelines that have been issued, whether at the federal, state, or county levels, have come from the public health officials. So at the federal level, through the CDC and the administration, announced the opening up America Again Plan. And as a part of that plan, it's three-pronged. There is a gating criteria, and that's data-driven conditions that each state has to satisfy before moving on to any of the phases. There is a preparedness mechanism, and that's what each state has to do to meet the future challenges. And then there is the phased guidelines, which there's three phases at the federal level, and those are specifically for individuals and employees. Next slide, please. So, the proposed gating criteria at the federal level, it's specifically, this is something that must be satisfied for states to go ahead and move on to their phased plans. It refers to symptoms, so you have to have a 14-day downward trajectory of influenza-like symptoms and a downward trajectory of COVID syndromic cases within a 14-day period. You also have to have either/or in cases, in cases, you have to have a downward trajectory of the documented cases within a 14-day period, or you have to have a downward trajectory of the positive tests as a percentage of the total test within a 14-day period. And the last piece of the gating criteria is hospitals. The hospitals have to treat all patients without crisis care, and they have to have a robust testing program in place for at-risk health workers and emerging antibody testing. Next slide, thank you. So in addition to meeting this gating criteria, the states also have to meet certain state preparedness responsibilities. These are at the core of what you are seeing at every level, federal, state, county. And that is, I'm not going to read all of them, but that is certain preparedness associated with testing and contract tracing, the healthcare system's capacity, and plans. Plans for industry workers, plans for high-risk populations, plans for facilities, plans for citizens, and you have to have an ability to monitor the condition at all time. Next slide, please. Now, once this gating criteria has been met, and the core preparedness has been met by the states, then they can go ahead at the federal level and move on to phase one, two, and three. And essentially, phase one means that all of the gating criteria has been satisfied once through. Phase two means that all of the gating criteria has been satisfied for a second time through. And phase three means all of the gating criteria has been met a third time through. So when you're thinking about from a day perspective, you'll see a lot of 14-day references. So for phase one, that 14 days comes into play, and then so for phase two, it would be 28 days, and so on and so forth. The phasing itself actually includes at the federal level, specific tactics and methods to be utilized by individuals and employers. But as you can see, at the federal level, a lot must be met through the gating criteria and the core preparedness before, under federal conditions, a state can move forward to phasing. All right, so next slide, please. So that was the federal level. Now we come to the state level. At the state level, you'll see a connectivity between what the state is putting out and what you just saw on the federal side. So at the state level, California has six indicators for modifying the stay-at-home order. And those criterias also have to do with testing and contract tracing, as you saw in the federal, preventing infections, hospitals being able to handle surges, the development of therapeutics, ensuring that businesses and schools and childcare facilities can support physical distancing, and an ability to go ahead and re-implement certain measures if, should the need arise, to go ahead and keep folks at home. So those are the six indicators that pretty much, as you can see, match up to the federal requirements. Next slide, please. Now, the state also went ahead and released some resiliency roadmap stages. So this is kind of like the feds have their phase one, two, and three. This is that version at the state level. So basically, they're indicating that stage one was overall safety and preparedness, just focusing on essential workforce and stay-at-home orders. Stage two is focusing on lower-risk workplaces. Stage three is focusing on higher-risk workplaces. And then stage four is essentially the end of stay-at-home order. As of last Friday, we are in what we affectionately refer to as stage two A. So, we are creating some additional opportunities at the state level at this time for lower-risk sectors, which typically are the sectors that don't have direct contact, for those to go ahead and open up, as you have seen through curbside pickup and other modified type of functions. Next slide, please. Now, in addition to this, the state had also referred and offered an option for regional variance. Now, at the regional variance level, here's how that particularly works. Essentially, there's two options. Everybody is moving forward in the state of California. We are either moving forward based on the state's timeline through the phases. We are either moving forward based on the state's timeline through the phases. Again, we are currently in phase two A. Or we can move through, move forward on an accelerated county timeline. The accelerated county timeline can only happen via Board of Supervisor approval and the public health officer's attestation. Next slide, please. Now, last week on Thursday, the governor went ahead and the state went ahead and released the regional variance criteria. So as you can see, the regional variance criteria, to some degree, does match up with the federal preparedness, core preparedness requirements. But there is also a little bit of a variance in the state specific criteria versus the federal specific criteria. So at the regional variant, regional variance criteria level here in the state, we can have no more than one case per ten thousand people in the last fourteen days. We can have no COVID nineteen deaths in the past fourteen days. And our testing capacity has to be at a daily testing of one point five per one thousand residents. We need to be able to go ahead and have the ability to support employees when sick or exposed, availability of disinfectant supplies and protective gear. And we need to have containment capacity, so at least fifteen tracers for every one hundred thousand residents, and an ability to temporarily house at least fifteen percent of the county's residents experiencing homelessness. Next slide, please. And of course, we need to have, similarly to the federal level, the hospital capacity for surge at thirty-five percent, a robust plan to protect the hospital workforce. We need to have vulnerable population plans in place. For example, at skilled nursing facilities, we need to have more than fourteen days supply of PPE and be able to show an ongoing procurement from a non-state supply chain. And then we need to be able to demonstrate as a county that we have some metrics in place for either slowing the pace of the reopening or tightening up modifications altogether. Now, when these when these regional variance criteria was released last Thursday, as we can expect statewide, we had differing responses. There were some counties, seventeen or so counties throughout the state of California, out of a total fifty-eight counties that were eligible to go ahead and move forward through the accelerated plan almost immediately because they were rural counties that had very limited infection rates and no death as their overall populace is not great. But there were some counties like Riverside County, Orange County, San Diego County, San Bernardino County and others that have a more populous environment that found the regional variance criteria to be challenging to meet and were discouraged. So at the county level, the Board of Supervisors had their their May ninth, twenty twenty meeting. And they went ahead and they, of course, rescinded all county public health orders except the K to twelve school closures. And they went ahead and they also strongly recommended the continued use of facial coverage. Keep in mind, social distancing is still in the state order. And then they also directed staff to go ahead and work with a coalition of neighboring counties to go ahead and advocate for the use of other criteria that can be reasonably met to show the ability to go ahead and accelerate through phase two and three for the counties that didn't necessarily meet the the immediate acceleration, namely those rural counties and less populous counties. Now, at the May twelfth meeting today, actually, potentially while we're speaking, the County Board of Supervisors is considering a readiness and reopening framework for approval. They are also going to be considering the forming of a coalition with neighboring counties to develop common recommendations to show to the state that we as Riverside County, San Diego County, Orange County, San Bernardino County, that we can safely accelerate through the various phases. And they're going to go ahead and direct the county staff to submit the framework to the state for approval. Now, that brings us to the city level. At the city level, on April twenty-eighth, the city council unanimously directed staff to work with the community stakeholders to draft a reopening plan for its consideration and adoption the following week. Of course, we went ahead and postponed that slightly to go ahead and come back this week because we wanted to accommodate additional information that was going to be released by the county and the state, which it was last week with the regional variance criteria. So here we are with a community recovery and reopening plan before you and an advocacy letter before you for your consideration. We want to go ahead and answer a couple of foundational questions in this process. So why the community recovery and reopening plan title? Who was involved in the drafting of the plan and why? What are we going to do with this plan and why? Is this the final plan? And how does this plan work with the other plans you just heard about? So first, why the community recovery and reopening title? We've heard a lot about an economic choice versus a public health choice. And we believe that that is a false choice. As Mayor Stu indicated at the beginning of this particular meeting, this is not a question of economics versus public health. And we believe that this particular plan is about getting our community recovered, whether that is economically, whether that is from a health perspective, whether that is from a mental health perspective, and moving forward to go ahead and get it, get the community back on its feet. So that is why the plan is not titled an economic recovery and reopening plan. It is simply our community's recovery and reopening plan. Now, who is involved in the drafting of this plan and why? It was absolutely crucial for us that this community plan in a week and a half still have a community element and community content. We worked with the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce. We worked with Visit Temecula Valley. We worked with the Promenade Mall. We worked with Temecula Valley Hospital, and we also reached out to the school district and Pachanga. And at this time, I really do want to just shout out to Emily Falapino and Erica Russo from Community Services. Without those two ladies this weekend, there's no way we would have been able to get this before you today. So thank you both for all your help. So it was really important for us to get that business sector view, that tourism industry view, that promenade view, because they have so many different businesses there. And then, of course, also have Darlene Wetton look at this because to have that overall health perspective. And so that is why these folks were consulted and why their input was valuable. So what are we going to do with this plan and why? So we are going to use this plan to go ahead and partner with the county to advocate. As you heard from the county and other our neighboring counties, other than just Riverside County, we're going to need to advocate. We are going to need to advocate very strongly to the state if we are wanting to move forward in an accelerated plan versus stay on the state's timeline. And we're going to use this plan to go ahead and continue our conversations with the chamber and Visit Temecula Valley and the hospital so that we can go ahead and continue to try to keep a pulse on the community and what is happening at the community. And then, of course, we want to go ahead and use this plan as a resource, as a tool guide. It is purely recommendational only based on industry stakeholders' input and and some best practices and procedures. Page two of the plan very clearly provides a disclaimer that states that these are industry best practices and procedures and that CDC guidelines, as well as state guidelines and OSHA checklist with all of which have have links incorporated into the plan should be utilized before any action is taken. So is this the final plan? Absolutely not. The plan, this particular plan is a living, breathing document that will need to be updated routinely in response to any changes in guidance from the government and our local industry. We envision that this particular plan is going to be something that becomes a resource, maybe on our Temecula Revive Recovery page. And in addition to having economic resources for economic recovery, our our community will be also be able to access some of these best practices as well. So how does this plan work with the other plans that we we talked about? So first of all, it's complementary, not contradictory. As you heard at the federal, state and county levels, those are really broad plans. Their their frameworks, their guidelines, their proposals. And this particular plan is 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 not that. This particular plan is a detailed oriented plan, and it does not necessarily focus on generalities, although there is some opportunity for that. And so we believe that we can use this plan to go ahead and advocate and and work, continue to work in partnership with our community because it is complementary. So who is this plan for? This plan is for us. This plan is for the county. Food for thought there. This plan is for the community stakeholders. So they know that their voice is being heard and their best practices are being shared, and we're continuing to have conversations with them. And then this plan is also for our community sectors, whether that is small businesses, whether that is houses of worship. It's also for them as a resource and a tool guide. So the plan itself is laid out in four segments. So you have a business segment, a travel and tourism segment, a local government segment, and a miscellaneous segment. Under each of those segments, there are various sectors. So for example, I'm not going to read all of these, but for example, under the business sector, you have office and professional services, personal services, manufacturing, restaurants and retail. Again, this is a broad brush. We know that not everybody will fit into everything. However, this is basically our working with our community stakeholders and attempt to go ahead and cover some broad industries and sectors that we are aware of. What's in the plan is actually a balanced approach between economics and public health for each sector. So in each sector, for example, personal services, which would include nail salons, hair salons, grooming services. There is a function description. So basically, what is happening? What functions are being undertaken? And then there is a correlating public health measure to that. So we are taking a balanced approach between what we are doing and what public health and safety measures we are taking. And there is a phasing associated with that as well. So what public health measures are taken in each phase? The phases do line up with the California state's, the road recovery map. Now, general considerations. This plan is, again, not a final. It is a draft to help keep the conversation going for advocacy purposes and resource purposes. There is absolutely opportunity for consistency and generalities. For example, you know, the because there were so many different folks that contributed to this particular plan, there is opportunity for references to PPE broadly to and to encompass that face masks and gloves and so on and so forth. There is opportunities for generalities and employee and health wellness policies or cleaning and sanitizing protocols. There's also opportunities, as I indicated, for a tangible resource continuously updated with current links. We mentioned that we were going to go ahead and potentially integrate this into the Temecula revive efforts as well. And we can add those OSHA checklist and industry guidelines through through that resource as well. So in addition to the plan, you have our advocacy letter before you. Our advocacy letter is our story. It's where we are. It acknowledges the existence of an unprecedented pandemic. It acknowledges an unprecedented response at all levels of government and all levels of humanity everywhere. It acknowledges that we have experienced success in the public health space and mitigation that we have taken in the public health arena. But it also acknowledges that there is a correlation between what we have been doing and undertaking from public health measures and how that has related also and resulted in an economic crisis. And the direct impact of that in our in our community, on our community, on our residents. And that's why you will see direct references to the need for a paycheck to plan, to be able to pay bills and to be able to pay mortgages and rents. Because it is at the street level here in our community, that is the direct impact. And and of course, it has a request for relief and an offer to work in partnership. Again, this is our story, and that is what we will be sharing with the county and what we will be sharing with the state. So for next steps, we are hoping that we can go ahead and after council approval, we can go ahead and send the letter and the plan to county and the stakeholders. And as indicated, the county is actually taking some steps today, so time is of the essence. We want to go ahead and share the plan as a resource on our website. We want to actively support county efforts to safely reopen and accelerate a reopening plan for the County of Riverside. And we want to directly advocate for change in either the criteria or subregion approvals. This is a really important thing because right now, we will be on the state's plan unless we can, as a county, unless we can convince the state of one of two things. And that is either change the criteria to go ahead and make it more reasonable for the populous counties such as Riverside County, San Diego County, Orange County, or go ahead and allow these counties to go ahead and approve subregion approvals and subregion plans. So with that, Mr. Mayor, the staff recommendation is that the city council go ahead and consider the plan and the letter and provide us with some general direction and authorize us as staff to continue updating the plan as needed in response to additional orders and guidance, which seems to be never ending. Mr. Mayor, that concludes our our report, and we're happy to answer questions.
Okay, so thank you for that very detailed report. And the staff recommendation is very detailed also. So I'm going to ask all my colleagues, remain muted till I call on you, and I'll go according to seniority and rank. And then if you have a question that someone brings up something, just throw me a signal and I'll I'll be able to see you signaled. So don't worry about that. And then I'll reinsert you back into the the queue to speak again. So Mary Ann, Mayor Pro Tem, do you have any questions of staff at this point? No.
I'm good.
Mr. Nigar, do you have any questions of staff? Unmute. You're muted, Mike. You're muted.
I got it, I got it, I got it. Just my hands don't move that quick. First of all, good morning, everybody. And Randy, excellent staff report and excellent document. A couple of questions. Mr. Mayor, are we going to proceed with questions, public comment?
Questions of staff first, yes.
Got it, thank you. So Randy, going through the document, I I did not see much of, and I I could be wrong, but I wanted to get your point of view. We didn't really proffer an opinion. We it it seems that we just sort of, don't want to use this word in the majority, but pretty much mimic what everybody is doing as our plan. Is that a fair statement? Where did we, where did we deviate, I guess, in a Temecula style? They're doing X over there, but we think we should do X over here as it relates to our plan.
Yes, and Mr. Nigar, I can go ahead and answer that question. While there were discussions of of differing in the criteria, and keep in mind that the content also came from community stakeholders and industry stakeholders. So the the Chamber of Commerce and Visit Temecula Valley and so on and so forth. And the content that they are getting from their professional associations is also this content. So we wanted to keep some consistency with what the state, the feds, the professional association and the OSHA checklist are going ahead and putting out as well because that is what we're going to be able to use for advocacy to demonstrate responsible moving forward.
So, great answer. So as a council, we are our we can safely say that this document and these protocols is what our business community desires.
Absolutely. I think it is very safe to say, given how closely we worked with the Chamber of Commerce, Visit Temecula Valley,
that this is consistent with what they are, that they actually provided some of the content, that this is what they are recommending and that we had medical oversight, hospital oversight as well.
Very good. And they're confident that down the line, that, and I'll address this later, but they're confident that down the line, they feel they've gone down the line far enough so that even if you're not a chamber member or connected in one of those groups, that it's representative. Like for instance, in the hair salon, beauty parlor group, do we know who was consulted, who represented that group?
I don't know exactly who was consulted, but I do know that Emily did specifically reach out to an industry, an industry owner, a business owner.
Okay, so and none of this is meant to put you on the spot. I'm just trying to get the gravity of how far we went out into the community. And I see we're banking on the Chamber of Commerce and a few others. And our, and our hope is that they've reached out deep enough into the community to get a broad perspective. And the reason why I'm asking this, and where I wonder is, are we approve a plan like this? And then we find out that, that sectors in this community are going to say, I was never consulted. I can do this. The chamber never contacted me. Who represented me in this group, et cetera, et cetera. I suppose you don't really, you can't really have an answer there, but is there any comment you can offer? I mean, maybe you, Mr. Adams, how we move forward in this process? Because invariably, we're going to get that sort of feedback.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a stab at it. I don't, I don't think it's realistic to think that we could successfully pull every single business and division within every sector of the city of Temecula. That's, that's just not feasible. We could do what a lot of communities are and just sit back and hope for the best and wait for the county to derive their own reopening plan. But that's not what this city's doing. We took 10 days to put together a high level reopening plan that, that took the input from, from major sectors. Now, it's, it's still an imperfect science. And I think to Randy's point, there's people and there's, there's, there's groups within these sectors that won't necessarily agree with what we put forward. But the majority of that group, based on their affiliations and their associations, were taking their input. Because we're not going to make 100% of the people happy. But again, doing something we felt was warranted. And I think the city council feels that way. So we're putting forth a best effort that's responsible, that fits into, you know, the rules. We got to know how to play this game. And the state of California and the county are setting the rules. And we're trying our best to sort of fit our local sectors and our local industry and our thresholds into their respective approvals.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Ryan.
Just a quick one. And I don't think there's probably an answer to this, but I'll ask anyway. You know, in the county guidance, it suggested, you know, 15 tracers per, you know, certain population. You know, 1.5 tests per 1,000 individuals, that sort of thing. That's on a countywide basis, not a city basis. And so there's, there's no, how does that trickle down to our city though? I mean, are we, are we looking at, you know, sort of from, from our population standpoint, ensuring that the county is providing, you know, 15 to 16 contact tracers, you know, as needed to meet the state standard? Or that locally, our population is receiving 1.5 tests per 1,000 individuals per day? Or, you know, how are we, you know, interacting with the county on that level?
Yeah, so I think that's a really good question. And of course, this is criteria that came to be known last Thursday. And so this, so today, the county board of supervisors is actually trying to figure out. They actually, if you look in their, their staff report, they don't want to use this framework. They actually have referred to the federal framework. So it'll be interesting to see if they can be successful in advocating for the use of this framework or can be able to go ahead and convince the governor that this particular framework will, you know, can be changed. If this particular framework stays in place, then I think there's opportunity to have the conversation about subregions. Because, because as it stands now, and we actually brought this up at a recent league board meeting or with the governor's office as well, was when these, this county acceleration plan was introduced. One of our questions was, is there going to be opportunity to either have the counties go ahead and approve by subregion? Because if subregions of the individual larger counties can meet this criteria and be accelerated, that would be helpful. Or is there going to be some sort of an appeals process or something where we can say that we need to be given special consideration? The answer that we've received was, while they'll go ahead and take that back for further consideration, because this is all new and things are changing, that right now, the plan is set up for countywide approval. So that's where we stand right now.
Okay, so that'll, that'll get to some of my comments later then. Appreciate it, thank you. That was it.
I do have a quick comment. So how many times has the state criteria changed thus far, Madam City Clerk?
So if you were referring to the regional variance criteria, it has not. It just got introduced on Thursday.
Okay.
So, and neither have the indicators and neither has the roadwork map, the stage one through four. I think where the challenge is, as I was explaining earlier, is that when you have several pieces of the puzzle coming to you one at a time, it seems disconnected and disjointed. But then when you put those puzzle pieces together to form the puzzle, you see how the state's criteria is based on the federal criteria and the county criteria is now being based on the state criteria. So as of right now, the state has not changed any of the indicators, any of the framework or any of the regional variance criteria.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Schrank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any questions of staff right now.
All right, thank you. All right, so we'll go to public comments.
Mr. Mayor, we do have five public comments. Okay, so I will go ahead and read those public comments into the record as indicated on the notice on the agenda. So the first comment is from Kathleen Pelsier. Dear Temecula City Council, I am a registered voter and resident of Temecula. I respectfully request that you vote to open all businesses in Temecula immediately. The threat of COVID-19 is not what we were originally led to believe. Zero deaths in a city of 115,000 people. We must act now to save our local economy from destruction. Many businesses will not survive an extended shutdown. Look at the city of Colinga. Their city council voted that all businesses are essential and I would agree. I am a single mom and I have been out of work since March 17th due to COVID-19. We must let the healthy return to work now. We should protect the vulnerable and people who want to stay home have the freedom to do so. The message given by the Riverside County Board of Supervisors was very clear. This shutdown needs to end. Sheriff Chad Bianco has already stated publicly that he will not enforce these unconstitutional measures. Businesses should be allowed to open and the city of Temecula should not stand in their way. Thank you. The next speaker is Carrie Geisow.
At first, the concerns and stay at home orders made sense with all the unknowns of the coronavirus. But after two months and the flattening of the curve, it is time to reopen Temecula and allow people to interact and businesses to thrive. As a mental health professional, the psychological effects this is having on people may be as devastating as the loss of life from the coronavirus. Further, unless the economy gets going, the financial ramifications may just destroy businesses and individuals, ruining the wonderful community we love. Please listen to the people. We want and need to reengage in life. We need connection. Quarantine should be for the sick, not the healthy. If people are at high risk, then they should stay home. But the rest of us need to be out, about and building immunity to this disease. On behalf of my family of five living in Temecula, we beseech you to vote in favor of opening things back up. Thank you for your consideration.
The next speaker is Tom Ludwig.
I am in favor of opening all businesses as soon as possible to include wineries, hair salons, nail salons, retail stores, restaurants, bars and theaters. The actual infection and potential death rate is far below the previous models and predictions. Although my business is in protective equipment, I prefer to sell less and enjoy our wonderful city more. The state of Georgia opened these establishments 18 days ago and are now showing a 4% reduction in infections per 1,000 tests. This lockdown should not be continued and those citizens who disagree have every right not to participate in the new opening because it's their right. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jeannie Young.
I have been a resident of Temecula for 30 years. I have watched it grow from a sleepy town into a charming lively city, offering something for everyone. It breaks my heart to see all that, all that is being destroyed in a few months' time. I implore you to reopen the city of Temecula now. It's time. Let's do it now while our small businesses still have a fighting chance to come back to life and serve the wonderful people of Temecula. We all fiercely love Temecula. The residents of Temecula will respectfully follow the guidelines that you put forth for reopening. Let's make 2020 the year that we came back and conquered COVID and gave life back to so many. Please give us a chance. Together, we can do this.
And the last speaker is Kristi Ramos. I am a mother, a homeowner, essential worker and resident of Temecula. I want to know what the city is doing to enforce the state orders. There have been many videos posted online of street parties in downtown Temecula this past weekend. People were openly drinking in the street, dancing closely and in large groups, talking and sitting together. What is the city doing to protect those of us who are adhering to the orders of stay at home? First of all, drinking in the street is illegal. And secondly, the business encouraging this should be fined. Lastly, the people partying and saying we're free are disrespecting those of us who are trying to continue to flatten the curve. Until the California, until the governor of California lifts the stay at home orders, I expect as a taxpayer and citizen to have appropriate measures taken to communicate to the city of Temecula and its residents that this behavior is unacceptable. Furthermore, if these violations are brought to your attention, I expect that you ensure there are consequences to these actions. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comments.
All right, so we'll open it up to council discussion on this item. Mayor Pro Tem Edwards, do you have any comments?
Not yet.
Okay. Mr. Nigar, any comments?
Yeah, one follow-up question and then a few comments. Madam City Clerk, when you gave that very detailed staff report and you talked about the stay at home order, one thing I did not hear is that there is a series of recreational activities that are allowed. Was it true intent to go over those? Are those going to find their way into the plan or is plan strictly business?
Yeah, there's a series of other executive orders. The governor has went ahead and put into place for a variety of things, whether it's recreational, whether it's beaches, whether it's, whatever the situation might, workers comp. I mean, there's so many different orders. But we just really wanted to focus in on the most relevant to this particular plan and which is fairly business oriented.
Okay, so it generally, because I don't want to tangent into something that we're not necessarily talking about, but a lot of people are watching and we talked about the stay at home orders and what's required by the state. But there is a whole plethora of reasons why you can come out of your house to, to participate in activities. Somewhere along the line, we have to make sure we communicate that so the wrong message isn't sent. Maybe the council can, can discuss where that goes or how we communicate that. So, Mr. Mayor, with that, I do have a few comments. First of all, Dr. Ron, I appreciate you bringing up what you did, because I was going to bring it up as well regarding locally. Leaders throughout Southern California have stated vehemently that the governor's new criteria released on Thursday is not achievable, under the variance plan. Yet you did make a good assertion that here in Temecula, we can achieve it if we're not achieving it already. And I think that's real important, that somewhere in the document, we mentioned that. And Dr. Ron, if you don't mind later on, as you approach this, maybe you can elaborate on that. Would you do that? Okay, or I can get into it specifically now. Another comment I have is, I think we owe it to our residents to somewhere within the document have an opinion. You know, we don't want to put forward a document that won't be listened to. We also don't want to put forward a document that gives, I think, our public the wrong impression that, you know, what we say, all of a sudden makes it legal. I think that, that gets in the dangerous ground. We'd be communicating something that's not true. And we don't want to cause that. I don't want to be the cause of, I believe restaurants should be able to open. Personally, I think they can apply social distancing and whatever other distancing is necessary. But the governor has said, no, you can't do that. So I don't want to give somebody the wrong impression at the same time I have an opinion. But I think as a council, we need to come up with an opinion, not necessarily an opinion contrary to what the governor is saying, but opinions nonetheless of what we, of what we think, somewhere in the document. And I have a few ideas. Did you prepare a slide of my questions or should I just bring them up one by one?
Actually, that, that particular email was distributed to all the council members, so they should have it in front of them.
Okay, very good. But the public can't see that, correct?
No, we do not have that on slide.
Okay, so let me try to pull it up. And that way I can work from it. Bear with me, please. So I did not have it ready. Okay, here we go. All right, so let's see. As I brought up earlier, I have a lot of respect for the sectors that you reached out to. And I know as City Manager Adams made reference to, we couldn't possibly go and, and pull every bit. Or not, our reach was far enough. And, and the reason for that is, this, this meeting was just noticed yesterday. Compared to the meeting, I believe we had the last meeting where you can look, you had over 300 people on, on, on the Zoom call. Here I see we have 71 and probably about 30 of those, maybe more, are staff members. So somewhere along the line, I'd like to revisit this plan after it's made public. Mr. Mayor, maybe if that's a week from now or two weeks from now, I think the public has to have adequate ability to respond on more than one day, one day's notice. So I'd ask that my colleagues consider that. Two, on page one, there's a good disclaimer at the end, and I think that needs to be there. The, the citizens in our city is, is referenced in all the comments we've been, we've been getting, have real trouble with what is defined as essential or not essential. And I think we need to make an opinion statement in the least, that it's our desire as a council that all businesses become essential. Personally, I would get a little bit more forthright with that, because I think, you know, how you define essential is really becoming relative at this point. And I don't agree with some of the definitions from the state, et cetera. But again, I don't want to send out contradictory information, but I think we need to state an opinion. And so I would like that something be put in there, that it's our opinion, that all businesses become essential. Maybe it's semantics, but again, I think we need something in there. Madam City Clerk, you referenced on several occasions that this is a dynamic process. And again, on that page one, I think we need to say it more forthrightly, that this is a dynamic document. It's subject to change. It could change daily and the council will revisit it. As I mentioned, in a week or two, but also as needed. This is just a very, very dynamic process. Um, this is just a very, very dynamic process. Um, throughout the document, uh, under the phase-two guidelines, which we're in now, it refers to the need for PPE or, or mask, and these are no longer required by the state or the county. And I'm going to ask my colleagues to remove all references of that throughout the document. Um, I, I, I like going with that, but I understand some of my colleagues may have some reluctance. So if we want to mimic the county and, uh, remove references or at least say that, uh, um, while they're no longer required, it's recommended, I'm okay with that. Let's see. Uh, on page twenty-eight, bullet six. Um, we are requiring again under phase two that park, uh, patrons that, let's see, that we will require park patrons to comply with the orders. I don't think we have the, the means to enforce that. And, um, I don't know that it's our job to, uh, enforce that. Um, Sheriff Chad Bianco said he's not enforcing it. And, uh, pursuant to our last meeting, um, it was affirmed, uh, by the city manager that the park rangers may give friendly information. Uh, I'd like to remove that from the document as policy. However, if our park rangers, as a matter of their daily, uh, going about their business, feel they want to interact with the public and pass on the information, I certainly have no problem with that. But as a matter of policy, I, I mentioned it at the last meeting, we have no business, um, engaging the public and telling them what to do. Um, especially when the sheriff is no longer enforcing it and he's the law enforcement branch. Um, of course, there are exceptions. And, you know, if there's an unruly crowd or an incident, obviously, law enforcement should be mobilized. And then lastly, um, uh, I, I, uh, I'd like to take a different opinion regarding essential as it applies to houses of worship. I think that, um, uh, it's been stated on many occasions that houses of worship can open and, uh, um, and comply with CDC, um, that's on a federal level, uh, on the state level, um, as it, as it relates to houses of worship, um, are now considered non-essential is perplexing to me. And I think we need to take an opinion in that regard. And so those are my comments, and I don't know how you want to proceed in addressing them, Mr. Mayor, but I certainly want to hear what my colleagues have to say.
Right, so let's move on to Councilmember Ron. Please mute Mike and Mary Ann.
Okay, um, well, I, I, uh, I, I'm not sure.
You're muted, Mike.
And so therefore I will mute myself. Um, so, uh, you know, look, it's, uh, this is, uh, this is an easy one for me. I mean, these are recommendations. They provide some basic framework and guidelines to our various industries. Um, I, I don't necessarily think we, we have to bring this back for, uh, uh, you know, um, public comment, um, in any official capacity. I think the, you know, opportunity for our businesses to, uh, comment are available. Um, our residents and anybody else, uh, can, can always comment on this. It's identified as a living document and it's going to continue changing, especially as the state and county and even federal guidelines are, you know, continue to sort of roll out. So what I, I'd, I'd hate to see us do is spend, you know, an inordinate amount of time creating this document as though it's a final version of anything, because I think it was clear that it's not. Um, and so, you know, uh, perhaps we can ask, uh, whether or not it's possible to have maybe a easy, uh, link or something where folks can submit comments like we have on other workshops and, you know, items of interest. Um, or, you know, a lot of these folks could work through their, um, their own partnerships with Visit Temecula Valley or the Chamber of Commerce or others and funnel, you know, through them as well. Um, but, you know, my, um, uh, you know, I'd, I'd, I'd like to see us, you know, handle that just a little bit differently. Um, because we could just keep revisiting this over and over as new orders and things come out. Um, and so substantively, uh, I think, you know, the, uh, staff have done a remarkable job of sort of pulling together a lot of information from a lot of industries and a lot of perspectives and, you know, bearing in mind the uh, differences between, you know, more specific, uh, industry, uh, desires or, or interests versus more generalized. Um, so I'm, I'm okay with that, uh, you know, with the way it is. And, uh, you know, I'd also say that as, you know, these comments or, um, you know, additional information roll in from either, you know, uh, county or, or state or federal government or others, that we do get kind of a, you know, summary update of, of where things are. Um, you know, as we roll this out, uh, only because, you know, we're, we're going to want to keep abreast of all of the, uh, the changes ourselves and whether that's in, you know, form of an email or whether it's a report at future council meetings, you know. Um, I'm okay with either one. Um, but, uh, but definitely, I mean, I think the whole point here was just to provide some basic guidance. Um, these aren't hard and fast rules. This isn't law. This isn't policy. This isn't recommendation or, or regulation. It's just recommendations. Um, and it's sort of the, you know, back of the envelope, if you will, and in some respects for a business to be able to look and say, okay, so I do this for a living, you know, I have this kind of employment and this kind of visitorship. And these are the things that other, you know, industries are doing. Um, I, I wouldn't want to see us remove words like, uh, PPE, um, from the plan. I mean, that doesn't make any sense. Of course, businesses, you know, can make their own decisions, but, you know, uh, ma, you know, removing any reference to that, I don't think serves any, any real purpose. We know what's out there. We know it's necessary and we know that, you know, depending on the business, you're going to want to see folks, you know, or businesses may want people to wear face masks. They want, may want shielding between their employees and the service counter, uh, markers on the ground, uh, you know, face shields, gloves, you know, whatever it happens to be. Each, I think, provides, you know, uh, business can provide its own, um, you know, guidance themselves. Uh, and we will see what the minimum required standards are from the federal, the state or the county level. But, you know, this, this is just a, a guidance document. Um, and so I think, you know, I think it's, it's worth, uh, saying. Um, I don't think, uh, you know, I, I agree, Mike, I, I, every business is essential, right? Everybody can, can make that argument that, that that's the case. Um, I don't mind making a statement about how important our, our businesses are and our economic sector is to, you know, Temecula and the community. But I don't want to get us into a debate of what essential means because that's a specific sort of governmental term that was created and defined by both the federal and the state government defining certain types of businesses. And so for us to, you know, offer up a different definition of essential, it doesn't override, you know, a state or federal, um, you know, definition that they have provided in their sort of regulatory context. Um, so if we want to have a statement, you know, saying that, yeah, we'd love to see all businesses, um, you know, successful and we, we do believe very strongly that everybody in our community is essential. I have no problem with that, but, you know, I, I just, you know, I think that's, you know, that's a, that's a fine statement. Um, you, you asked a question regarding my, uh, uh, recommendations, I guess, as far as testing and other things were concerned. And I had sent out some, some things to the city, uh, early on in this process and staff. And most, if not all of the, uh, uh, recommendations I had at some level were being addressed. So Peter had responded back, Randy had responded back, staff had. And so it was good to see that we're all kind of on the same wavelength, um, here. Uh, but there's, there's a number of things that, that came up, um, and, and I could talk more about this here i- in a moment. Um, uh, if we'd like, but there's a number of things that I'd like to see us, uh, focus on, uh, as well. Um, and that, uh, uh, from, from an economic recovery perspective, it's outside of the context of this document. So I'll save it for, for later in, in these, uh, in this conversation. Um, and, and more of a, uh, future direction that the council could be taking. But for now, I think that's, that's, uh, that's kind of where I'm going to end with my comments, uh, for now.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Swank.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you to, uh, our Madam City Clerk for all the hard work and effort you put into this. Uh, circling the wagons with the community, clearly, uh, the last, uh, ten or so days has been a, a lot of work for you and your team and, and, and the community as a whole. People really, um, provided input. I mean, I directly reached out to, uh, several people within VTV and, and the chamber and business owners and, and they definitely felt like their voices were heard. Um, so I commend you on that. I think the, the plan that we have in place is, um, it checks all the boxes for me. Um, I spent, uh, the better part of, uh, yesterday and this morning, uh, really poring over it. And I think it does a great job. I think it provides, um, realistic recommendations and, and just guidance. And, and I think the, the one thing I really want to, um, focus on is that's really what we need to do. We need to provide, um, people with opportunities to make good choices. And what does that look like for every business and that's going to be different? So I think that does that. I want to, uh, you know, address, uh, Councilmember Nigar's comments about providing an opinion and, and, and I disagree. I, I don't want this to be an opinion piece and, and while I respect your opinion, I don't necessarily think as a body we have to, uh, make a stand on and, and have this be an opinion. This should be, uh, fact-based and, and, and providing resources to, uh, the business community and, and the community as a whole as to, uh, what they can expect. One thing I'm realizing is even the business community itself isn't monolithic. You know, you have, uh, you have business owners that are being extremely cautious, um, and saying, well, I'm not ready for this yet. I need to be more prepared. I need to provide. I need to make sure my employees are safe. I need to make sure that the, the patrons that come in are safe. And, um, so not everyone is, um, wants to throw everything out the window, uh, and, and, and the way that uh, we're trying to do this, I think is the right way. This is a good, solid approach. Just providing good guidelines, uh, as we can move forward in this. And, um, you know, with respect to PPE, I mean, both the, the White House and, and the California Department of Public Health are recommending, uh, its use. Um, certainly not a mandate. Uh, we see the White House yesterday coming out saying it's, uh, we need to wear, uh, face masks, uh, on the job. So, you know, I think it's important to leave that in there. The last thing I want is people arguing about face masks and, and quite frankly, that's actually happening. Uh, I've spoke with some friends and, and had people contact me saying they were yelled at because they were wearing a mask. And, and the last thing we really want is people now arguing about whether or not one should wear a mask. That if, if you want to make it a recommendation and say, this is your choice. If you feel you are more comfortable wearing it, then that's what we want to do. We want to provide that, uh, that guidance. So, uh, like I said earlier, for me, this checks all the boxes. It does a very good job of providing, providing that high-level uh, plan that we can then, uh, send up to the county. And, and quite frankly, uh, I think they're going to use a lot of it and, and they're going to see that we're prepared and that we put a lot of time and effort into this. And this is a very well-done professional document. So I think, uh, we're on good footing. You know, can we do more? Uh, I think that's always the question, right? Like, um, i- is it possible for us? And, and maybe I'll make this recommendation, uh, down the road as, as, you know, things happen. But, um, is it possible for the city to, um, to figure out a loan program for our businesses to keep people afloat? Um, I, I think that's a possibility. That's something that we can certainly work on. Um, do we need to, uh, obviously with this document, we're providing, uh, there's some recommendations and, and, and how do we get that out to the, to the general public? I mean, we need to really look at that and, and find the resources to make sure that every business is, uh, is able to um, meet some of these recommendations and, and safely move forward. So I think that's something we need to look at as well. And again, uh, you know, this is unprecedented and, and what we're trying to do right now, um, is protect public health. Uh, that's our, our number one goal. And, and then move forward in a very measured economic way that provides everyone to, uh, to safely get back to work and, and, uh, again protects people's lives and, and, and also their livelihood. Because the last thing we want to do is, is, uh, is, is, is open everything up and, and then things sort of, uh, get sideways. That's, that's not, uh, going to be helpful in the long term. And, and I believe this is a, this is the long game. This is not a sprint. This is a marathon. Uh, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, but, uh, clearly with this document, um, you know, I proudly support it as written. Uh, and, and I think it's a, it's a great, uh, opportunity for our community to move forward.
Thank you. Okay, I got a couple of comments before we go to you, Mary Ann. What I really like about this document, it's not a city-driven document. This is a document driven by industry and business and city public health safety concerns. So it's not just the city making recommendations on how to open a business. It's businesses making re- recommendations. And, you know, frankly, as a barber shop owner, you know, my number one job is to make sure we can open safely and have a, um, a, a, a safe environment for both my employees and my, uh, customers. And, and to rebuild customer confidence in being safe too. I mean, I think that's what we're going to witness, is we're going to see a lot of people who are still going to be afraid to integrate back into society. And so we need to basically give them the confidence necessary to know that they're going to be safe in every business environment that we go to. So, um, that, that's another thing. And, and when the public comments were, uh, going and they were talking about for us to open Temecula, and I just want to reiterate what I said in my, uh, original statement, we don't have the authority to do that. In fact, if we were to do that without having that authority, we put at risk those very people we're trying to help by, uh, possibly them losing their state license. You know, if a bar reopens, they can lose their ABC license. If a barber shop opens, state board has already said they'll, they'll suspend our license for up to two years. So there's a lot of reasons not to reopen right now without the blessing of the state and the county. So, you know, financially, yes, it's devastating, but it could be more devastating if we do it too quickly against what they've, uh, set up for us. So that's the other thing that I wanted to point out. And, you know, uh, when, when someone was talking about the stay-at-home orders, I'm glad Mike brought that up because really it's not, you don't have to stay inside your house. Lowe's is packed because people are doing tons of yard projects. Everybody's cleaning out garages. They're doing all sorts of things around their house, but they're venturing out to Lowe's and Walmart and picking up, you know, supplies for this project and that project. So it, it doesn't mean you have to be cooped up in your house if you're not in that category. If you are, definitely stay home, be safe, do whatever you need to do to protect yourself. But it's not stay at home, lock yourself down. It, it is get out there. Still do be as, as protective as possible to society. But again, it goes back to, uh, personal responsibility for each individual who is in that classification that might be affected by this virus. Please don't do that. Stay at home. Follow all the recommendations the CDC is requiring, you know, so that's my comment. Mary Ann, what's, what say you?
Well, Randy, fantastic job, first of all. This really does put us in a position and gives us really, um, great guidelines to become leaders. And I, and I just don't mean it for, for Temecula. I mean by setting an example regionally. And, you know, Stu, we had the Zoom call with all the other mayors and, uh, council member and city managers. And everyone is looking for that type of document, you know, they're looking for, or really for us to step out and kind of lead the way with. And I think this document really is, um, the answer to that. We have been in situations similar to this before as far as, um, the politics of this and how upsetting it is to people and how people really are, you know, taking sides, one side or the other. And it's very polarizing issue because people are just tired of being home and business owners have everything at stake. And they're just losing so much money every single day. When Temecula first became a city, we inherited lots of horrid conditions from the county. Um, roads weren't finished, cut through streets, um, all kinds of things. And, um, it was, it was really a chore and something that became, uh, common practice. This, it's a matter of educating our residents to know what we can and we can't do. And in those days, we continuously had to say, we didn't create that street. It was there. It was approved by the county. You know, ha, most of the development in Temecula was already approved when we became a city. And some of it was great and some of it wasn't so great. So it really became an education process on the part of the city and the council members. And each one of them really took that on, um, to be very positive and explain to residents as they received emails or the, as the residents complained, explain to them how this happened. It wasn't the city's fault. We inherited it and we're trying to make, uh, changes. We're trying to play catch up. And really, it's the same situation that we're in now, a much, much more serious with this pandemic is that our hands really are tied to a certain degree by what the county does and to a greater extent, um, you know, what the state does. and to a greater extent, you know, what the state does. So it's going to be up to us, each one of us, to educate in a very patient way. And that's really hard sometimes. Some of the emails we've gotten have been pretty nasty. But to educate what we can and we can't do, and we just need to keep repeating that. And, you know, just be very matter-of-fact about it and very factual. And, you know, in the old days, over time, instead of people complaining about zoning or things like that, really, people were taking each other on. And someone would complain about it and some, another resident would step up and say, well, you know, that's because the city inherited all of this from the county. So pretty soon, it became common practice for people to carry that water for us. They understood. And so they defended the position. I think this is always going to be a very polarizing issue just because people are so impacted financially and physically and emotionally. But this is a great step in the right direction for us to really take on that leadership mantle and be able to explain. And it's a moving target. So we're going to have to, Randy, you're going to have to keep us educated every day. You and Aaron have been great in sending those summaries and reports to us about what's going on. And I'll tell you, I've been very frustrated when I read some of those reports about what the state, what the governor's doing or, you know, what the county had been doing. But it is what it is. And we need to foment, instead of fomenting anger, we need to foment, we need to give people hope and stress the fact that it is going to end someday. It will end someday. The city has different directions. We've made arrangements. We've got reserves. And we're going to do everything we can to help residents and business owners work together to make sure everybody gets back on their feet. We did it during the recession and, and people came out of it and Temecula thrived just like, you know, we knew she would. And I think that will happen again. But this really does give us a chance to step up and be those very strong leaders, offering hope and a positive way out. Just not to say that we love everything that's going on. We don't. And we're very concerned, but I think we have that option and we need to really step up and take advantage of it. And you did a great job, Randy, Aaron, everybody.
All right. Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, Mike. Mike, you ready?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can now. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Can you hear me? Okay, great. Okay. Well, um, the opinions I'm about to put forth are strictly my own. And I don't mean them to reflect on any of my colleagues, but what I have asked for is extremely reasonable. I cannot fathom as a leader, me personally, with one day notice, not giving the public an opportunity to review this document and for it to trickle down into the business sector to all of those businesses that may not be connected in some way. I, I can't imagine something as reasonable as that would not be accepted. On that reason alone, I will vote no on this, if that's not in some sort of motion. And that's just me and how I view my leadership. Let's see. I, I think, again, speaking for myself, that our community looks for, I'll want to say we, but I'll keep it at me, to become a leader and to declare that I believe they're essential is very important to me. I did say in the beginning that I do not want to lead anybody astray. And I do think we, we do need to, to make sure that nobody gets the wrong idea. But people are losing their businesses. I know you want to talk about hope, but you give this another 30 or 60 days and people are going to be beyond reach. The PPE that the government is giving is only good for 60 days. And right now, it really isn't working because people are making more money on unemployment than they would by being brought back to work. It is a fundamental flaw in the process. And I digress though. I think simply stating as leaders of this community that we want everybody to become essential is a very reasonable thing to do and bolsters hope. I think a statement that this is very dynamic and it'll be revisited by this city council as often as needed, whether it's on a daily basis, which I hope that's not the case, a weekly or, or on a bimonthly basis, again, is extremely reasonable. And that is expected by my constituents. And again, I'll leave everybody to their own opinion. Regarding PPEs, if the council decides to leave that in, you will be, or I should say we, will be taking a position that is contra- contrary to the federal, the state and local. It has no place in our plan unless we're taking a position that we disagree with them and want our citizens to continue to do that. If the council decides to do that, I will disagree. But certainly we can put that forth, that this Temecula City Council, contrary to federal, state and county guidelines, wants everybody to continue to use masks. I, a- again, regarding our staff, known as park rangers, but we've supplemented it with other staff, enforcing laws is not their position. They're to call on the sheriff's department when they encounter some sort of lawbreaking. And the sheriff has indicated that he's not enforcing that. Again, we're making policy here, policy. So I do not want to require our staff to take that position that somebody's not using a PPE, especially when it's not required on the three levels higher than us. But I will not preclude personal conversation. If a ranger wants to interact with people and communicate that, I have no problem with that. And then I think, and again, I will, we, i- if this is not included, I'll be voting no. We need to declare houses of worship essential. And, and it just is. It, they, they are essential. They can abide by all three branches of social distancing, federal, state and county. And there's no reason not to include them. And I am confident that this is something our community is vehement about. And I don't care whether you're Christian, Jew, Muslim, Christian scientist or, or want to meet as an atheist, okay? I, I could not in good conscience allow, allow or proffer the First Amendment right to assemble to be violated. And I just feel that way. I don't know how we craft a motion. And I do not, out of respect for my colleagues, want to cram a motion down anybody's throat. I can craft one, but I suspect that we're not going to be in agreement. And then one last thing that I almost left out. I also think we need to put in the document that, that because we can meet the criteria as a city, that we encourage further county subregions. We're a $1 billion tourist economy. It needs to open. We meet the criteria. We need to tell them we meet the criteria and, and ask them to encourage to go to subregions on a county level. If it doesn't do any of these things that I'm asking, then the document just mimics what's already out there. And to me, doesn't make a statement at all. And again, these are my opinions, not meant to point out anybody from staff to my council colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We'll go to Matt first and then Mary Ann next. Go ahead, Matt.
Thanks. I, uh, you know, I, again, I don't thi- this isn't a policy document. It's just recommendations. And, and policy statements are important, but that's, I think, a conversation that we can have, you know, outside of this context. I don't think anything that we've seen in this document is contrary to anything that we're seeing at the federal, state or local level. These are simply just recommendations and best practices. And in fact, I think, you know, in speaking with our city clerk and other staff earlier this week and reviewing the document, you know, I asked that, you know, in, in the final version of this, we mimic some of the language that we're seeing from the county. Because the county didn't say, you know, we're, we're disbanding all, you know, PPE and we're disbanding all public health orders. They landed on a place that said, we strongly recommend, right? I mean, that's, that's really what they said. And so I, I see no problem in, in, you know, recommending. But it's, it's not, you know, it's not up to us to define that for our, our businesses. And it's not up to us to, you know, define that, you know, regulation or, or local ordinance. These are simply just recommendations that if a business, and it's exactly what, uh, Mr. Mayor, what you were saying earlier, you know, if you want to give the confidence to your local businesses that, you know, certain orders, you know, are, are going to be in place in your barber shop. And you want to see, you know, hey, everybody, if you wouldn't mind, you know, I'll give you a free mask. I'm not telling you what to do, Stu. But, you know, hey, it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt and maybe you can help protect my employees from, you know, any sort of risk. And anybody who else can come here, you know, might feel a little bit safer. Even with the recension of the county order, you know, I, I happened to go to Lowe's over the weekend. And I'd say over, over 90% of the people there were wearing some sort of face protector. And so folks just, you know, they're doing it because they choose to. They're doing it because they, you know, have, have respect for other people and the businesses and their staff as well. And so, you know, so I don't think this is out of line in, in any way. It's just, you know, some businesses indeed are, are going to struggle with how they reopen. And to see some guidelines and things that their peers and their colleagues are doing is just fine. Going back to the, the idea of this, you know, not being available for public comment, it absolutely is. You know, again, this isn't a, an ordinance. This isn't a regulation. This is just a document that provides, you know, sort of a collection of information that can be made available to our residents and to our local businesses to provide some recommendations on what folks are doing and what they, you know, have, have seen in their own business. It's a living document. There's plenty of time for folks to continue. And like I said, I'm sure we can set up a framework for, for folks to comment on that. I'd, I'd even go a step farther now and say that, you know, maybe, i- you know, in, in some of the substantive comments that are shared with, with staff or VTV or the chamber or whatever that help guide it, that maybe, you know, you guys can, can bring forward those recommendations and say, hey, here's some other stuff that folks thought of or, you know, here's some other things. This doesn't, you know, a- again, to be clear, it doesn't set a bar, right? We're not saying these are the minimum requirements. And we're not saying that at our parks. We're not saying anything. We're not defying any federal or, or state or county orders. We're not setting a more stringent standard, you know? And we're not asking our staff or, or anybody of our park rangers or other folks to, to enforce anything. In fact, the word enforce was only used once and it was in reference to homeless outreach issues and enforcement there, but not specifically to anything happening, you know, within our parks. And so, so I just want to, you know, want to be clear that, you know, again, this isn't an opportunity for us to create policy statements. We can do that later. This is just a, you know, a guideline, a framework that helps people understand. Delaying this by two weeks is delaying, you know, our ability to demonstrate to the county and to the state, our ability to move forward as a, as a community. And so, you know, we're all working, I think, a bit out of sequence. And we're trying to, you know, chase this tail, you know, if you will. You know, trying to figure out the right steps and it, and it's constantly moving. And it's not an easy process for us at all. But, you know, certifying this and saying, yeah, this is kind of where we need to see ourselves as a community, gives us an opportunity to start the conversation with the county, to be able to advocate for our businesses to open quickly and provide us with a solid position that says, we as a community have prepared at least, you know, some draft documents to help guide us down that pathway. And if that opportunity opens where we can accelerate, then we've already done our, you know, initial draft due diligence on making that occur. So, you know, so that's, you know, that's kind of where I'm at with it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Edwards.
I, Mike, I have a couple of questions. And, and I have your, your notes in front of me and they're, they're very reasonable. So time, time being of the essence, that when we adopt, I hate to wait the two weeks. And if we're going to continue to review, I mean, can't we go back and add to it or amend or revise? And then how do you, when you say each business needs to be made essential, do you mean we just declare that they're essential? Is that what you're, no? That's why you-
If I can answer your one-on-one, I'm not in any way, shape or form indicating that we delay in adopting this document. I think it's essential we adopt the document today. But, but that document needs to get out into the public and trickle down to all. We don't even know who was contacted other than from a high general level through the Chamber of Commerce and other sectors. And we presume that out of the thousands of businesses in Temecula, that everyone has heard about this. To revisit it and to just take it up again and say, what are the new comments we had? What are some of the concerns people have? To look at that in two weeks, I cannot find anything wrong with that. I think it's essential. Anyway, I hope I answered your question.
Okay. Well, I don't have a problem with that as if we're adopting today and we're going to be open to accepting comments from residents, you know, I, that's, that's fine. Explain to me, I'm looking at the council desire that all businesses become essential. What do you, what do you mean exactly?
What, here's what I mean. There is great consternation over some businesses being essential and some not.
You mean, mean labeled essential?
Exactly.
Okay.
As defined by the CDC, the state. And the county hasn't weighed in there. They just adopted the state and the CDC. For instance, it came up on several occasions that, by many of my colleagues, that while we're supposed to stay at home, everybody's going to Walmart. They're going to Lowe's. And so you have to really ask the question. I- 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 if you can go to Lowe's and shop and wait in line to get in the store or Costco to get in the store, why can't those same, hear me carefully, why can't those same criteria apply to smaller businesses? Now, it doesn't apply to smaller businesses. And I don't want to mislead anybody that it does, okay? But I think it's incumbent upon us to make the statement in some way, shape or form that there is an ambiguity between those two, okay? And, and that does not make sense. The reason why I bring it up is because our community, almost in total, cannot reconcile this, this lack of common sense. And so I wanted to split the baby. This city council has a hope that in short order, every business becomes essential. We need to-
In the eyes of the federal government, in the eyes of the federal government?
Absolutely. Yes. Exactly. That is, i- it is our hope. It is, it is our desire. It is our effort to create that, to make that happen. It needs to be set.
Okay. So if we, if we would, without confusing people, of course, but if we would, would have like an opening statement to this particular document that said, that, that would make that comment, the city council strongly desires that the federal government recognizes all businesses as, as being essential and important. And they're certainly important to us or something like that. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, I am. Maybe something to the effect, and there are people here more articulate than me, that when it, when it comes to that topic, that we simply identify it. There seems to be great ambiguity as to what is essential and what is not. Although we want to recommend that our businesses and our public follow federal and state guidelines, we ask that in the very near future, that the federal and state become more articulate as, as to what is essential and what is not.
Okay. That makes it even more clear.
Yes.
Yeah. I, I have, I have no problem with having some kind of an, an opening comment to, to this document that would, that would say something like that. Or maybe, you know, it has a draft cover letter that goes with it that makes that statement. I mean, I certainly think, I understand people's confusion. If you, you know, if you go to Walmart to buy shampoo and razor blades and cat food, why can't you go to, you know, some other stores, a smaller store that sells those same things? So I understand people's confusion. And I've given up trying to figure out the federal- Um, and I've given up trying to figure out the federal government and the county and the s- state on this one. So, okay, that gives me some clarity about what you meant. And I have no problem with presenting some type of um paragraph or, you know, what our goal is in this whole thing. Um, and I don't know, I don't see anything wrong with expressing the desire that we hope that there's more clarity in what is essential and and why, you know, who decided and and why they decided that way. Um.
Is is that appropriate for the letter, however, the advocacy letter and not the?
Yes, I totally agree with you. I think that.
Yeah, I think that's fine. Would that be okay though, Mike? I mean, is that, yeah, I I have no problem with that because I think it it is confusing. And that's probably one of the most common complaints that I hear is uh how, you know, what makes my business not essential and somebody else's business, you know, essential? So, um, I I I still am fearful about, you know, I, you know how we are with church, we're, we we go to church, we, I'm a worship leader at church. I'm still a little bit fearful about um opening up the churches in general. And wouldn't that be contradictory to state and federal declarations? If we, if we said we will allow churches to gather?
It violates, it violates state, not federal.
Okay, so I I think I, I don't want to, I don't wanna be more restrictive um as as far as like the face mask go and everything. I'm fine with saying um rec- you know, they're recommended. I don't wanna impose face masks on anyone and I really don't want any verbiage that suggests that, you know.
Does not suggest.
Yeah, yeah, and I and and I don't wanna really do that, but.
You're talking about two things.
I know.
Asking churches.
I know, well, because I'm gonna say I don't wanna go more restrictive. On the, on the other hand, I don't want to, um, I don't want to violate state law or federal law either. And I and I I think we would be doing that, at least state law, as you said, if we um mentioned something about the churches. And I think.
Something real quick. I really think uh to Mike's point about uh churches becoming essential, I think that also would be a very good thing.
Yes, I was just gonna say that.
And, you know, as far as businesses being non-essential, it goes back to every sermon you've ever heard about your pinky, you know? It's probably the the smallest uh uh part of your body, but break it once and figure out how essential it really is. I mean, if you ever broken your pinky, you lose so much ability to use your hand. And so, a- and that's essentially what we're talking about. We're talking about every business in this town is essential to somebody. I mean, saw the emails I was getting from customers begging me to cut their hair because.
I've already asked you that too.
So, so, I mean, i- i- I i- I agree with Mike, every business is essential.
Yeah.
And and for us to be able to say that in an opening statement, I totally agree with that. I don't necessarily wanna see it in the document that that they prepared. Um, and as far as the PPE is concerned, uh, it doesn't say they have to wear PPE. It's it's a recommendation where necessary. So, you know, I I don't think the PPE issue is much of an issue either, so.
Yeah, and and I'm fine, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, so, I mean, Mike, are you okay with uh some sort of statement put in in the uh, the uh prelude, you might say, of of the document that expresses that, you know, we as a city believe that every business in our city, along with every worship house, is essential to our citizens?
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, 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 every business I can agree with. Um, um, we're talking about several things here. So, as far as essentiality, I'm fine with the with the letter, I think that's fine. When it comes to PPE, I am fine if we mimic the county language, but that should be in the document because it is part of the recommendations and the phasing of opening. If the county can adopt it, we can adopt it.
I agree with you.
Okay, yeah, there's, or, so if you wanna say that that PPEs are no longer required but strongly recommended, I'm okay with that, I said that from the outset.
Yeah.
But when it comes to houses of worship, okay? I um, l- l- listen, I do not want to suggest anybody not, does not grasp the gravity of this. So, I don't want anybody to be on the defensive, I'm only speaking from my own point of view. We are talking about the most precious constitutional right that exists that is something that personally I cannot play with, that I will not allow to be arbitrary in my own life, that I cannot reconcile why why you can gather in Walmart and and go by and and or or Costco or Lowe's and go by social distancing uh protocol, but you cannot do that in a church? It does not make sense to me and I will not give up that right. And I think that um that could be stated. I, you can state it in the document that all, let's say, under that section of houses of worship where we give the recommendation that although the state, uh, it's the state guidelines, although the state guidelines does not declare houses of worship essential, et cetera, it is the opinion of the Temecula City Council that they are. And 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 leave it at that. I believe as a city, we need to make that statement unambiguous, unambiguously.
Right.
I I have, I have one comment, though, I I understanding why people do, might not have the same expectation for um going to church as they do to Walmart. When you go to Walmart, you don't expect to, you know, hug people, sit right next to people, hold hands, you know, while you're checking your shopping list. Um, and being physically close and part of fellowship is being physically close with other people at church. And so that's probably why, you know, there's such a difference.
All right, let's go to, let's go to Matt, Matt's got uh a question in the queue here or a comment.
Yeah, I mean, look, I I think the council can state what they need to in our advocacy letter. And if we, we agree that, you know, places of worship, you know, are 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 essential to the fabric of our community, um, which I think collectively, I think that's, you know, that goes beyond saying. Um, but the document itself is apolitical, right? It's an, it's not a political document, it's just a, you know, here's some guidelines, right? So, I'd prefer that we keep the document apolitical um and and use our advocacy letter for exactly, you know, those kinds of of statements.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
If, if, um, if we want to make, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Uh, let Aaron chime in here.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just along the lines of of the conversation, I just, I wanted to point out the document, the the draft plan that's in front of you all. It currently says that PPEs prescribed by the county and or state. So, um, maybe we're discussing something that we don't need to spend a lot more time on if that aligns with Councilman Nagar's um direction there and is comfortable with the balance of the council.
I'm, may I, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, Aaron, I'm totally for that, but it it, the document is riddled with the suggestions to do that without defining that, without what you just said. So, it may um in one or two places say what you just said, but then as we start to get into the recommendations, it 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 doesn't make that clear. And as long, and and we don't, uh, just, I just wanna make it clear, that's all. So, wherever it's not clear, let's make it clear.
All right, I think Randy has, Randy has a comment to that also.
Sure.
Yeah, that's um, that's kind of why in the in the presentation, we suggested that there was opportunity for consistency still throughout the document, including where it says PPE. Um, we can certainly make sure that nothing is, PPE is a very broad term. It covers gloves, it covers goggles, it covers face masks. So, we can certainly go through the document and make sure that that everywhere where PPE is referenced, it references as determined or um by the county or state or or even needed by the business um as applicable. I know we have a lot of different places where it says PPE um as applicable, as the business decides, they may or may not want that. I do, um, I wanna remind the city council, um, as Aaron mentioned, as Matt mentioned, as some some have mentioned, um, the document itself is absolutely one hundred percent um changeable. It is going to be changed on an almost regular basis. It has to change in order to meet industry standards and so on and so forth. The advocacy letter is where we can really put our story and our feelings from a policy perspective about anything. So, I'm happy to add, um, Councilmember Nagar and others, we can, we can go ahead and add that the city council feels strongly that all businesses are essential um and specifically houses of worship, you know? We can certainly add that in the advocacy letter. Um, at the end of the day, um, the purpose of this is for advocacy. And the advocacy tool, the plan itself has to be apolitical because we're going to the governor, we're going to the county to say, look, we think that we too, just like you guys, can balance reopening with public health measures. So, if we remove and water down without PPE references, it's gonna dilute our public health message. So, just, I mean, something to think about from my legislative directive uh director hat. When I go to advocate, when we send the lobbyists out, their their story is, look, Temecula's numbers, County of Riverside numbers are this, they can be trusted to do this. Look, they already have a plan to balance both. So, I just wanted you guys to keep that in mind.
And I just wanna, I just don't wanna be more restrictive than what's in place right now at the county or state. So, you know, um, I'm fine with that. And then we can also include um that the rules, that it's a living document um that will be revised, you know, and changed based on how the environment changes. So, I think we can include that in the.
And that's already in the disclaimer, we can make it even more clear.
Yeah.
Mike, did you have another comment real quick?
Yeah, and and I'm okay, um, if that makes it into the advocacy letter. I would ask, though, that regarding churches, it be its separate paragraph. In other words, we're going to statement that that it's our desire that all businesses become essential, okay? But as it relates to houses of worship, um,
Oh, you just broke up right there.
Hope that houses of worship become essential. Uh, yeah, I I I, it, for me, it needs to be its own paragraph and say, the Temecula City Council believes houses of worship are essential.
I'm good with that, I don't wanna lump them with the businesses anyway.
Notwithstanding, I see Peter uh gets a little restless there, we could put the disclaimer that says, um, notwithstanding that the governor says otherwise, it's our opinion that houses of worship are essential. We have to say that.
Okay, let's move on to Zach, Zach hasn't talked and I think he's got a comment.
Zach still here?
Right next door. So, a couple of things, you know, and we're focusing on essential and I don't think anyone's gonna disagree that everything is essential, right? But, you know, the idea of there's low risk and high risk and and quite frankly, um, you know, while Lowe's is open, uh, so is Hank's Hardware, and that's a smaller business, right? So, it's it's what's, what is it providing to the community and what is the risk? So, I think, you know, we we're getting into these minute details of things, but certainly everything is essential uh to someone. Uh, there there's no doubt about that, but we you you, we have to be mindful to mitigate the risk. Um, so, I I think that's important to to just say, and um with respect to um this, voting for this and, you know, the plan versus the advocacy letter, I I think that the plan needs to stay the way it is and I'm okay with that. And I think my council colleagues all are sort of landed in that spot. Uh, the advocacy letter, uh, and I can get on board with some of the changes. I don't want to get into, oh, well, I'd like to see this changed and I wanna add this, you know, we're just going round and round and round and round. And at the end of the day, this is too important uh to just sort of be hashing out every minute detail of every paragraph and whatnot. Can can we all agree that, uh, you know, we certainly want people to be able to go to church? Uh, we also need to be mindful that there are churches that do not want to open, right? So, there are people that are still just having services online and they aren't having in-person services. So, a- again, I think we can say those things and, but we're just, you know, our community is not monolithic. There are a lot of differences of opinions with this and and, you know, we can stand behind our community like we're going to do and I think we're going to be leading on this. And I think we're going to go to the county and and give them this plan and they're going, we're going to demonstrate that, hey, we're doing, uh, we are doing a good job and and we're putting together something that is is uh is important to our community. Um, again, I'll go back to it and 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 I think we value our businesses, I think we value our nonprofits and and rather than just stating it, let's put together a loan program. If if our local businesses are impacted and they haven't been able to receive any sort of financial aid from the federal government, well, then we're in a pretty good spot financially, maybe that's a a space for us to fill. So, we can actually step up and help these people that are suffering and get them back on their feet, whatever that means to them. If that means uh they need to buy uh protective equipment, then then let them do that. If that, they need to use that for rent or if they need to use that to pivot, if we need to, and I know we're already doing this in in some public right of way, is allowing businesses to use that public right of way. That's a good thing, we're be able to pivot and help these businesses. So, I'm, you know, going to support this uh this plan and and I'll end up supporting the letter. But at the end of the day, what are we gonna do to genuinely help uh these folks? And we can, we're gonna advocate for them and 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 that's great. And and I think that's uh, that's wonderful that we're doing that. But at the end of the day, how can we get down to all the businesses in our community and and assist them in some way, shape or form? I think that if we, and I and I know we all know this, the the path for our community forward is through our businesses. I mean, we we've, I've heard, you know, the tourism economy, that is what we are known for right now. And that is the the lion's share of where we uh provide our uh the resources to our community is via that. Um, so really, that, I I think it's just an important aspect of it and and I don't know what that looks like. Um, I know it's not unique, other cities are doing it, uh, have already done it. Um, so that's just something, some food for thought down the road.
All right, um, let's go to Matt, Matt's, Matt's been waiting too.
Oh, so, so since we're talking about advocacy, I had sent and uh a list of items that I think were important, not necessarily germane just to the uh document itself. But if we're talking about advocacy here, I'd like to focus on on one additional piece that I think we need to, you know, um, advocate for. Uh, and that's, you know, I hate going back to this and just bear with me while I talk about this, but that's talking about the data, right? Um, I mean, you know, unfortunately, we're still dealing with a bit of a black box when it comes to information. Um, and so what I'd like to see us include, and I can, you know, we can work some of, I've got one, two, three, eleven bullet points just on this issue. Um, but, you know, for for a very short period of time there, we were getting this information from the county that was, you know, graphically very um important, right? And so you were able to see trends and information and then confusingly, we haven't seen those in in the last several iterations for whatever reason. But that was, that was useful information and yet it comes with this this disclaimer on it that says not for distribution to the public. Why? I mean, if I'm a business that's getting ready to reopen in the city of Temecula, you know, I'd like to be aware of what the status and trends are and and to be able to understand, you know, what where the potential risks are coming from and be able to respond myself. We're all, we keep hearing that mantra, we're all in this together. Well, then let's really be in it together, right? I mean, why is the county not sharing this information with every business and resident, you know, in its jurisdiction? Um, so I'd like to know that information, I'd like to have, you know, what is the percent of the population being tested? Not just, you know, positive cases or recoveries, how are we doing with that testing? Because that's one of those requirements. Do we need to, you know, step that up? Do we need to have, you know, local testing and, you know, I'll talk about that in a moment. But but really, you know, where where are we with that? And and, you know, our businesses, our residents should should have that information. Uh, graphical representations of of recovery over time, you know? We get as a council, the number of patients recovered, are are we, is that increasing? Is it, you know, why does a resident have to go back to every report for the last, you know, sixty days to help, you know, generate their own graphical representation of our our trends? It should be just completely transparent and simple. Um, and so I'd like to be able to craft something, you know, just sort of summarize on the data issue, something where we say, you know, county, please help work with us to provide us with the kind of information that's important for our residents and businesses to be able to to see.
All right, thank you. Um, I did wanna go to Aaron. All right, thank you. Um, I did want to go to Aaron real quick and talk about the, uh, loan program or the possibility of that. Uh, that Council Mayor Schwenk was talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just, just real briefly, um, you know, I'm hearing from several of you, you're interested in doing more for, for the business. Um, directly from the city of Temecula. You know, frankly and candidly, you know, we're, we're finalizing our, our budget numbers. And, you know, I'm not necessarily gonna stand here today and tell you, we're in a good position to start giving out money. Um, as we have struggled to balance our, our own budget, um, with, with what's happening locally and, and nationally. So, um, we're heavily dependent on, on sales tax, which in some cases, the governor has deferred for twelve months. We're heavily dependent on TOT tax, which in some cases, our hotelers are unable to remit and pay. So, um, needless to say, uh, fiscally, it has been a enormous challenge. I am pleased that we did balance our budget, um, but it wasn't easy and it didn't, um. We, we set up a rainy day fund, uh, with five percent of our expenditures over and above our reserves. And it's raining, it's storming and we're gonna have to utilize that five percent to sort of, uh, balance this year. And looking forward into years two, three, four and five. So we're preparing for that. We're probably better off than most cities. Um, we've taken steps over the last thirty years financially. And we've done some really great things and we're gonna be going over all of that with the city council in the next two, three weeks. Um, but, uh, as I sit here today, I'm, I'm, I'm not prepared to sort of tell you all and give you assurances. That we're ready to roll out a low interest loan program. What I will tell you though, is that we're pursuing a federal grant that we are eligible for. We feel like we're very competitive for this money. If we're successful in getting this grant. It's set up to be, uh, for the city of Temecula to be the administrator of what amounts to a, a, a low interest loan. We're the pass through to small business. And so we are working with our lobbyists on that. We will be submitting that application. We feel like we'll be competitive. Um, and if that should occur, um, utilizing the federal funds, you know, that's, that's kind of a win-win-win for everyone involved. So, uh, Randy, did you want to expand any further on that or if I, if I got it right? But I just wanted the council to know, we are exploring other ways to sort of help locally our business. Um, we've also partnered with the, um, Small Business Administration. We're opening additional more square footage in our old city hall. And, uh, they're hiring more staff to come in and manage and consult free of no charge to the business community. In terms of business plans, in terms of federal and state assistance that's available, hold their hand, walk them through, answer questions. Again, no charges to, to, to the business owner. Um, these are just free resources that are out, um, available today as we sit here. So Randy?
Yeah, so Erin, you're absolutely correct. Um, last week we were notified about, um, an opportunity to go ahead. And apply for, uh, an EDA loan and we would actually be, um, a co-applicant with like the Chamber and Visit Temecula Valley. And one of the programs we can submit for, we can submit for several different programs. And one of them would be a potential, um, uh, revolving loan program where we could give ten thousand or twenty thousand dollars to twenty or thirty businesses. Um, that could help pay their rent and their utilities and, and, and like real world application on the street level for some of our smaller businesses. To keep them alive for a few more months. Um, it is a nationwide grant. Um, it is very, very competitive. Um, so we actually have a conference call set up later this weekend into next week. Once we can put stuff like this to bed, then that, and then we are still heavily, heavily advocating for our loss of revenue. Um, so in the next round of stimulus package, if we can start making our own budget whole again, then we'll be in a better position to help others as well.
There is, there is one other program, Councilman Schwenk, that, that we're exploring seriously. And it, it's also through the feds, it's through the Community Development Block Grant and the CARES Act, uh, specific to COVID nineteen. And so we're exploring, um, if we are a direct recipient of those dollars, how much is that gonna be? Can we consider using some of those for, for, uh, loan programs as well? So, um, hopefully in the weeks to come, you know, we'll have a couple of programs that, that the city could, um, roll out and initiate. Thank you.
So I'd like to say, so as a council, are we, are we good with the document that the staff has provided? Um, I, I'd like to kind of move past that item. And if we want to talk about the cover letter, okay, let's do that. But, but let's, let's kind of concentrate on, is this document something we're willing to move forward? And if we are, let's have a motion to do so. Okay, Mike?
A couple of things, I, yeah, and I'm willing to craft a motion that, that, that does that here in a second. One, uh, I did want to address a couple of things that came up, um, that may help us move forward. And when we can decide where it goes. Councilmember Ron brought up the, uh, idea of data. And, um, if we're going to address data, um, then I suggest it be in the form of, uh. Especially comorbidity. Uh, we're not getting that information. I think we need that information. Um, there's a, there's a bit of a conflict of interest, um, and, and, and I don't want to get in the weeds. We gotta keep it kind of, you know, on the surface level. But when, um, you know, you have hospitals who, um, due to being prepared, uh, for, uh, uh, you know, a million infections. Uh, and, and a million cases, uh, that was predicted across the United States. Suspended all kinds of other elective surgeries and received an incentive from the federal government. Of thirteen thousand dollars per diagnosis of, uh, COVID. Um, uh, and then if you're put on a respirator, it goes up to thirty nine thousand. And so, um, what we're getting is a lot of overstated data. Um, or at least we're not getting the data so we can determine if it's overstated. Um, and yet when I look at, let's say, some of the last data that came out, we find that there were many people in the. She's, Lord, Lord forbid, just in the category in their, in their late seventies, eighties. Um, that are passing away of COVID and you know that there's comorbidity there. Yet we're not hearing that and it's skewing, so it's skewing the results. So if we want to address data, I think it goes in the letter, um, we, not the document. To Councilmember Zach, I'm not gonna address the loan issue. I think that's something we, we, we can discuss it all the other time. Um, but I will tell you, if, if we really i- i- want to help the businesses. Number one is we revisit this after our feedback so we can find out how we can help them, okay? That, that will be real important when we get this out to the whole community, um, collectively. The other thing, again, we didn't really address and we should probably put in our, uh, letter, is the sub-region aspect of this. Um, if we, if we had to, um, uh, if we were asked, do we comply with the governor's order? I think if you took the wine country, Marietta, Temecula, Lake Elsmore, Wildamar. Um, uh, I think we meet the testing criteria there. Uh, I mean, uh, bare down per one thousand or ten thousand. I think we meet the, uh, the, uh, no deaths for fourteen days. Um, there's been quite a few in Lake Elsmore, uh, area, but we, you know, we can, we can talk about that. But I think we need to help the county push for a sub-region. Because the county is going to push that the current guidelines for variants, uh, under phase two. They've all said it, it's not achievable and they're gonna lobby for relaxation of those rules. So I think if we say as a region, we're a one billion dollar economy and we meet the criteria today. Okay, but we can't meet it countywide. I think that speaks a lot. And if we want to put that in the letter, I'm fine with that as well. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna try to craft a motion. Um, I'm open.
Hold on, before you start, let Peter chime in. Peter, Peter's been.
Um, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I just want to make, uh, a, a technical point. That I think is gonna be important for you before you start to craft your motions. The way the advocacy letter was drafted by the city clerk, it is to be signed by each one of you. And that's an important point, so whoever reads it knows that this is so important that all five members of the city council have signed it. So, um, what that means is you can't tell the city clerk, go back and draft these additional provisions. And then everybody comments on it and the drafts go back and forth among all of you because that would violate the Brown Act. So in the advocacy letter, whatever you want to add to it, you need to agree upon the language today. And then it's signed with that language. So that, you, you know, I think, uh, I think all of you have pretty clearly said what you want to include there. With respect to the essential businesses and the houses of worship. Um, in listening to you talk about data, I'm not sure that you're going to be able to craft a paragraph today. That everybody agrees on. Um, now you can certainly tell the city clerk, please send a letter to the county saying we want more data. And, you know, work through with an ad hoc committee or with Councilmember Ron or somebody. But I don't think you can do that with respect to the advocacy letter.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that. I, I think we're, we're, we're really talking almost three different things now. So I think we need to talk about a cover letter that goes with the document that we're hoping the governor and the county approves. And then I think we're talking about going to the county and expressing that we want more data on the breakdown. So when we do make that advocacy argument, that for sub-regions, we have data to build on. So I, I don't think that's part of this discussion. I think this discussion is let's approve this document. Let's give a cover letter saying that we believe, uh, businesses are essential, all essential. And that houses of worship are essential to a lot of people's mental health. And so, um, but I think the whole data and the sub-region needs to be another argument on another letter on another day. But I, I really kind of want to see us move this item along, so.
Mr. Mayor, let me try to craft a motion because, um, I, I'm gonna disagree with you a little bit. What we do here is going right to the county and right to the governor. And so we gotta seize that opportunity right now. I don't know that there's going to be ample time for cogent follow-up. Um, when all this, make this whole package from us to the county to the governor. And so let me try and Peter, um, with the help of Dr. Ron, we might just be able to craft the, uh, some language regarding data. You want to give it a shot, Matt? And, uh, I'm gonna craft a motion, but I'm gonna leave a little room in that motion to see if we can come up with language that everybody can agree with. Um, so.
You know, yes and no. I think that, you know, maybe we just put a line in there that says, you know, uh, uh, something along, something along the lines of, of. You know, improved access and transparency of relevant data. And, you know, follow that with, you know, maybe a statement that says, you know, that we will have specific requests provided. You know, at a later date. I, I kind of see where Peter's coming and, and, and Stu, I get what you're saying is, you know, I, I, I. You know, as much of an advocate of the data piece as I am, I, I would like the time to craft something that's, that's meaningful and relevant. And some that their public health experts could, could really respond to. But at this point, you know, aside from having kind of a nebulous statement, you know, I'm, I'm happy to work with, with Randy and, and, you know, whomever else to. You know, puts, you know, it, it, and, and look, I don't want it to make it a, a long letter. It can be, you know, too paragraph. That's everything we need. It's just, you know, I, I, you know, and we can advocate for that, you know, in, you know, in another document or a short letter.
And I'd second it, Mike, if you want to amend your.
Oh, well, I didn't make a motion yet. So here's my motion, see if it, if everybody, um, as a group can, can, uh, agree to this. Uh, first, my motion is we pass the document, okay? Uh, I'm not done yet. That in the document, we, um, we amend the PPE language to conform to the county's language, okay? My motion will also include that we revisit this issue in, in two weeks, um, to get additional feedback. I'm gonna leave the park enforcement out issue right now. I, I don't really want to, uh, cloud that issue, so we'll leave that out. Um, in our, uh, letter, um, I do want to make a statement that says. Um, it is, uh, our desire that our, and, and, and I'm, I'm paraphrasing. But, Mr. City Manager, you're more than capable, capable. Do you want to make a statement that it's our desire that all businesses become essential as soon as possible? Okay, and, and you can paraphrase that. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. I, I do, part of my motion, want to recommend, uh, want to say that, that Temecula and the wine country has a one billion dollar economy. And as of today, we meet the criteria for, um, the governor's phase, moving to phase three. Um, and therefore we, we encourage the use of sub-regions, um, uh, in the county's variance. And, uh, in a separate paragraph in our letter. That we make an affirmative statement that we believe houses of worship are essential and it can be that simple. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Peter.
If, if I could, um, I, I'd really like to have not just the paraphrase, but the actual language. And, and so if you would like, I don't know if Randy has some language for that, but I think we should make the language more explicit.
So we're clear in the draft advocacy letter already. It says that our one point two billion dollar industry has been decimated. We've actually, that, that sentence is literally in the, um, in the advocacy document as it exists now. And with respect to.
May I interrupt? Because, uh, you're, if you're moving on, maybe we add to that sentence. Therefore, um, uh, because of that economy, we feel, we feel that we should be treated as a sub-region. Is that where you want to address it or are you going somewhere else?
Um, well, the, the sub-region piece, we can certainly, um, put in the, in the letter itself. That we would like either for the, and I believe that there's a version of this that's already in there, but we can make it more clear. That we would like the county, um, to go ahead and advocate strongly for either sub-region approvals. Or a change in the criteria where the whole county can meet the condition. So with the sub-regions though, we are not, we do not know that we even as a Southwest city's sub-region. Meet the criteria.
Well, we've had, we've had no deaths in this area, uh, for the past fourteen days, probably for the past twenty-eight days. Um, so maybe you craft, uh, I'll take a shot at it, um, due to the fact that we're a one billion dollar. Due to the fact that we believe we can meet the testing criteria, uh, in the region. And due to the fact that we've had no deaths for the past fourteen days. Um, we feel and encourage that the county and the governor treat us as a sub-region.
Can we please define sub-region so we can verify that criteria has been met?
Sure, Temecula and the wine country.
The city of Temecula.
Wine country, and you can add Marietta. And that, that will help us fulfill our testing quotient.
Have Marietta had any deaths?
Not that I remember.
Yeah, they do.
In the la- in the last two weeks?
Yeah, go ahead, Peter. Let, let me hear what Peter has to say.
I, I was gonna say, maybe, maybe what you just want to say is, is we, we believe we, that the cities of Temecula and Marietta and the wine country region. Meet the criteria for a sub-region. Keep it general like that without having to try and verify.
I'm good.
Those, those, those specific facts.
I'm good, but I think you need to put it together with the one billion dollar economy. I, I think that, that, that emphasizes it a great deal.
Okay, and then, um. Randy, did you have any, did? I wrote up some language for the other two paragraphs, but I don't know if you.
Let's hear it. I want to hear what your language was.
Okay, uh, the one paragraph on, on page two, um, at the end, the new third par- or, uh. At the end of the third paragraph would say, the city council feels strongly that all businesses be deemed essential. Um, and then a, a separate paragraph below that, the city council feels strongly that all houses of worship. Uh, be able to provide in-person worship services and be deemed essential.
Sounds fine to me.
Yeah, I like it.
I'm good.
And did you want a short one on data?
Now, let, let's not confuse the issue. Let's, you know.
I agree. I agree. I think that's a separate issue, a separate letter that, you know, we can, we can ask for, um, at a. Well, I mean, we could ask for, we could create another letter. well, I mean, we could ask for, we could create another letter tomorrow for that. So.
Yeah, I mean, look, if, if maybe with the, uh, support of my company here, maybe I just work with, uh, you know, Randy on, on crafting that letter. I don't mind signing it or Stu, if you want to. Just to, just to put something out there sooner rather than later because we are going to advocate for the sub-regional content. Then it would be nice to be able to have, you know, the kind of data and, and information that we'd want to provide, uh, for that support. So there's probably just a quick way of, you know, sort of, uh, friendly request to, to improve, you know, accessibility.
And that's okay because all five of you will not be signing that letter. So you could, you've given the, the general parameters for that and then, uh, the, uh, the mayor and, and councilmember Ron and the city clerk and city, uh, manager can, uh, put together a letter of, of that nature.
Okay.
And then just lastly, um, just to reiterate that we're applicable through the document that the PP issue will reflect the county's.
Absolutely.
Yeah. That's, that's part of the motion.
Yep.
Yep.
All right. So we have a motion in a second, right?
Yep.
Okay. So could we please have a roll call vote on this?
Yes. Councilmember Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nagar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Aye.
Uh, Mayor Stewart?
Aye.
Good.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, that passes 5-0 and we will get to work on that. Uh, Councilmember Ron, I think since you're the data guru, we'll let you and Randy get together and craft that letter. And I'll be happy to sign it, you know, on behalf of the city council to see if we can get some more data to be able to bolster our, uh, ability to possibly opening up hopefully on sooner rather than later. So, um, again, thank you all. We are going to now adjourn to our scheduled meeting of May 26th. Everybody stay healthy and safe. We're adjourned.
So long.
Yay. Good job. Thanks, Randy. Great job.